Welcome back ladies and gentlemen to uh thieves incorporate session thirteen. Shoot last where we met our adventures um well when we left them they decide to follow the trail. Because they had heard that some ne'er do wells that they may or may not know of. Uh have found the location of the blue orb. And they need to get it before they do otherwise they won't get that sweet sweet paycheck.
Um money is quite important. Yes.
Oh yes, yes.
I guess we go around the table again um. What did you do? Skervo.
Well, you see Captain Skervo managed to manage to change Clara's diet away from our boy Tharren. And had also managed to. To sec- to test our uh no he managed to hire along a. New traveling companion known as Dig Doug, the throwing rock merchant.
Yes.
He sells rocks people throw to Skervo when he's too shy to try to.
That doesn't happen.
Pyman, what did you do again?
Oh, I bought stones from Dig Doug and threw them at Tharren because he's being racist.
At the dwarf. For some reason our mouse takes offense at me being like I'm gonna spin that dwarf when I get my hands off when I make a rug out of his beard.
And how did your response to such a transgression?
I caught the rock and threw it back. I don't know.
It's child abuse right there.
What is it?
No, because you're a mouse.
Aren't you technically a teenager in their age?
Still a child.
I don't know the incidence of uh the legal system of. Of soft pods.
Ah, you see in my friends you started.
And Ticker, what did you do?
I identified some cockatrices and. Found a bridge that's gonna be a pain in the butt to get over because I don't because none of my magic can help.
Yeah alright.
Alright, and now we set the scene. It is around let's say two P M. Um the sun is shining outside as it normally is that dullish gray color that it. Doesn't normally have but now it has um. Or this time around uh our intrepid heroes are looking at a bridge. A very rickety bridge.
Do you even know if cockatrices can fly?
No. He ruled.
Roll nature wait.
He ruled nature.
Ah, he did.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it was a high.
Pretty high.
Yes. The answer is no, they don't.
No, they cannot fly. I believe they can take short flights like chickens but not sustained flight certainly not enough to follow us across the bridge.
Well, do we go across the bridge and risk falling five hundred feet down to our deaths? Or do we climb down and then go across the canyon and then climb back up on the far side?
I'm gonna read.
Look like the far side is straight across or like down elevation or higher elevation?
It looks as if it's about the same. Alright.
Like since I'm you know an artificer can I make a check to like know that this rope bridge that searches a mile would be basically impossible without magic?
You wanna roll Arcata?
Yes. I said dirty point.
The answer is.
This bridge is undoubtedly magical there's no way you could build on so long without magic. But I don't know if the magic will keep it together. It's likely that whatever spell created it has long since weighed in power.
Send the lightest across first.
Send the racist across first.
If the bridge breaks under heavier weight. Then you and you and went to 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 the car uh would be stuck over here. And you couldn't get us. And I'm at the bottom of the canyon can't use my gear to get across or climb down. How?
Improvising, do you know what improvising?
How are you going to improvise with half the gear on the bottom of the head of the canyon?
Now that would be.
Said there were wasn't there an oasis nearby?
Uh yeah, it was uh it was.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, it's where we're going.
Interesting, interesting proposition. What if we uh what if we sever the bridge about halfway halfway down? Effectively creating two long ladders.
We would have to first climb across halfway down the bridge and cut it and then not die falling down.
I can do that, I can do that. I can create. I can probably create pulse platforms. That's. Actually wouldn't provide me enough ability to get back. Now that I think of it.
You'd be happy to cross though. You would only have to climb up the far side if you didn't die from the drop.
The point is he like it doesn't matter.
If you need me to go across, I could go across.
We can. Cause if we do if we do this effectively make an impromptu ladder out of this. Very fairly decrepit bridge we might actually be able to. Improve our chances over uh over just climbing down the bridge and then uh and then climbing up.
Turning it into a ladder is well we have to cut it on midway on the far side. Which means we're over a five hundred foot drop which means you are going to drop five hundred feet and die.
Indeed. Unless of course. Unless of course Tharren can uh. Unless of course Tharren can uh fire fire right uh a good arrow shot.
Wiki dot site's not working, you got to.
I know I went on the J P McCaptain idea.
Alright.
I'll wiki.
Yep.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, yeah, they're pulling up rules.
No clearly you're just testing to see your dice tower works.
Yeah, well I know it works, yeah.
Yeah, even though even though like we're out of game trying to find rules for stuff to see if we can even attempt something.
You?
Which is.
Boring for a slight pause.
No. That wouldn't use me.
How about we have we go across like twenty feet? We listen in this for the bridge see if it's creaking or groaning or anything. As a weight test. If it starts creaking and groaning bad with just the five twenty pound mouse I don't know how much. A lot more than five pounds. The the very light mouse that is definitely. Yeah, and the very light mouse then it's not gonna hold either the three of us or Dig Doug, yes. Well, if you'd be willing Pyman.
Alright perception checks.
Yes. What are you gonna search you for?
Listening into sounds of the bridge creaking or sounds of the bridge.
Well, any any signs of. Yeah, yeah, any signs of uh ominous any ominous signs of.
Wood under intense structural stress. That's eight two.
Uh Pyman uh as you. How are you going across this?
I would recommend grabbing onto at least one of the ropes just in case.
I was thinking of like tie myself to a rope and just cause I only have like fifty feet of rope so.
Oh, we tie a rope to you. Alright, cuz you're the head.
Like connected to both of us.
Yeah, well use the heaviest little sturdy object we've got.
There.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
I decided to find a rock. And tie it to the rock there.
Like taking one step at a time.
Alright, then oh. I should hmm. You are very short and I don't know if you could actually reach like the rope bars.
Well, there there would be a there would be a rope bar like a hand guard.
How tall is Pyman again?
She's oh my god.
How how can you touch the ground without bending over?
She is small, that's all I.
Can you touch the ground without bending over because if you can then you could just grab the rope that's connecting all the wood planks together as that is you know stringing the bridge.
So I could just like sit down and scooch.
There probably plank 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 there's probably gaps between planks. Is there a gap? You couldn't exactly scooch because.
Okay, so it's like Shrek.
Like wood plank, foot plank, wood plank.
Don't look down.
I'm down, I'm looking down. Shrek.
Shrek, I'm looking down ah.
Yeah, I'm hopping to like one plank to the next.
Alright, um so uh as the perception checks um.
No, but you come down.
Skervo rolled a math thing at the moment.
It's not like a force.
Twenty-three.
Alright, oh.
So you're the only one who actually like I've done this I know the sound of the wood creaking. My ship is made of wood after all.
Wooden ropes? Rigging on the ship, wood on the ship.
So um as Pyman just like crosses like each individual thing that. Or or at least like kind of hops to each one it's it's the usual sound that you would hear from you know like a rat hopping from one plank to another.
So no significant change in weight.
Okay, time for the next one. Clara, go.
Alright, um do you wanna like push her?
No.
Because there's like a rope between me and Skervo she could just hold on to that.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, she is tall enough for that.
Yeah, yeah, she's tall she yeah Clara's uh let's say checked Clara should have been.
Child.
Yeah, 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 like it should have been like.
Like a head or so taller than me.
Yeah, yeah, she's yeah.
And there's us two over six foot.
She's like a.
Six foot.
The greater while I'm a.
Oh, quite lanky. He's the tallest.
Tallest but also one of the lightest because I'm very lanky, yeah.
What's that dick yeah who's tall.
And he wears clothes on the outside, yeah. Alright, alright, so Clara passes on the bridge it's just this she looks look look looks down the side sees the abyss um. And then just kind of like freezes like ten steps out.
You got this, it'll be fine, just look ahead, follow the mouse.
Oh scary.
Scare hole in the back of the mouse's head.
Alright.
I have big ears.
I think right like radar.
As much as I like our uh as as much as I like our plan it might be better to try to distribute our weight a little bit so it might actually be better to have Skervo go next.
Fan fly.
She is modeled after a big ear cocker.
Or wait no hang on some cuz someone might need cuz someone's gonna need to guide guide Clara across she's she's frightened.
Probably him because he's the next lightest.
Yes.
You you and Dig Doug are the type for heaviest. Dig Doug would make to drop his bag of rocks and pick him up on the side.
I will do no such thing. The bag of rocks is important to my business model.
You can't just tell a merchant to drop his waders.
Wait 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 wait. You put the ship you bring the ship out on the on the bank. Put the rocks in the whole ship. You ship back down we don't have to deal with the weight of the bag of rocks.
Only if Dig Doug's willing.
Or we put him in his bag holding.
What ship?
My ship.
I don't see a ship.
It compresses it gets small.
I still don't see a ship.
It shrinks.
Would probably be safer to put it in in would put it in my bag of holding so that we don't have to worry about the ship falling off the cliff.
Fairness.
That is true.
He wants just gonna keep on going until he.
Alright.
And she just like yanks back.
I will keep my rock safe. You will retrieve you will be able to retrieve them on the far side.
Ah alright, um is there insurance for this?
Oh, they made it stealth.
He he would like to be insured.
I genuinely hope that. What's insurance?
Form of contract. To ensure that. One party retrieve receives compensation if something is lost.
They used that slightly seven hundred years ago.
How much do I have to pay you for this insurance?
Ticker became an insurance company.
My friend it is a bag of rocks. I'm not trapped. It's it slows me down none to carry it. I won't need any payment.
That sounds suspicious. Going to attempt to satisfy. You gotta nat twenty so he just figures out you're just saying it's straight as it is.
Yeah.
Ticker's just telling it telling it like it is, yeah.
Straight as an arrow.
I think you see that trustworthy.
What the arrows make when a tree breaks it's like rock.
He truly is.
Um he then proceeds to pass you his incredible giant bag of rocks.
Into the animal league goes.
Yep. You hear a loud crash on the inside.
We didn't have anything left in the bag holding so.
It's the rocks.
Well, yeah, but. Yeah, just the sound of rocks settling. How many rocks do you have in there?
Two bags.
I'm not giving you a head count.
Everything goes by. Go normally.
Uh alright.
I'll lead Clara I'll lead Clara across.
Alright.
Does the bridge make any disturbing sounds depressing sounds?
We're still gonna use the.
And I will hold.
Uh still still using Skervo's perception he's keeping a careful eye.
I will hold my action so that if the bridge starts so that if like the board the board I or Clara is standing on is about to break. Or actually if the board I or Clara is standing on does break I will use cloud steps to create a to create a platform beneath us.
Okay, um good plan as you two are now occupying kind of the same space at the moment. Um it does begin to creak a little bit.
But nothing actually breaks?
Nothing actually breaks.
Just uh so everything seems everything seems okay on Skervo's end?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright, I'll pull the bag of rocks out and hear that on on the far side of the cavern well away from the edge so that it doesn't fall off.
Oh no, you guys haven't made it that far yet.
You're you're like ten feet out.
You guys are like.
You still have you still have like.
I thought it was like we made it all the way through.
No.
No.
That's right, it sounded like.
Well, well, the rope that she is attached to him uh is attached to her is fifty feet.
I'm totally gonna know.
There's fifty there's fifty feet between her and him.
Yep.
You and Clara are between the two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, once he starts to get it where's that I will hesitantly check the bo- the board in part way.
Alright.
And put my weight on it.
Um.
I'll I have I have a weight I have a grip on the the rope of the bridge.
Okay then.
Just to wipe my back away.
Yes.
It breaks.
I was like uh. Us I I turn to you and there there us three may have a problem.
Try the next try the next plank lad.
I wish that was a longer step to the second plank.
It holds.
Hmm this one hmm this whole bridge it might suck. I it seems slowly.
By way of. Bridge sound more or less okay minus the plank.
Yes, that sounds fine might have been a faulty plank.
Yeah, it's might be a faulty plank, just keep moving.
I asked I start across the bridge.
Alright, you started across the bridge, everything seems fine.
Okay. Who's heavier you or Dig Doug Dig Doug doesn't have his rocks.
Dig Doug doesn't have his rocks.
He's still an orc though.
Yeah, what weighs more?
He's a uh orc.
He's still a full blooded orc which is like one of the largest player races.
What's his profession? And they're incredibly short. But then they changed that. Oh well, um.
I believe the orc player race is is second only to the Goliath in terms of height.
Yeah, yeah, they used to be shorter than humans.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh. That's weird.
It's um.
Orcs are like the big guys we were marrying dudes that's what's scary.
It depends it's like I guess he's a gray orc so. Gray orcs are different from D and D or D and D orcs are actually pig orcs like Ganon it's just that. Nobody ever talks about them so when you like look at when you look at like the orc stat block and like the in the. In the monster's manual those are gray orcs you're looking at. That's a that's a whole interesting story itself but we don't have time for that.
We do not.
He's a gray orc.
Alright, so he.
So he is one of the bigger ones.
Okay, so it's prob- so I probably.
He's probably heavier than you even if he's not like bigger or tonny like he's built the same as you.
Alright.
Cause him build he's a lot bigger.
Alright, I guess I I guess I'll be the one going next. I uh I will uh I will take a firm grip of the of the railings uh. I will take a a good grip of the railings to make sure I make sure if anything untoward happens I can catch myself.
Alright.
And I shall make my fate.
Alright.
If you fall, I'm falling with you.
Yeah, you're gonna yank her off the end.
The third step through. A plank breaks.
Bye.
Oh boy.
Like him with his repair you. Yeah, no.
Alright, so.
I think the ground fight is on the art.
I'm gonna carefully test the next one.
It holds.
Alright, uh I guess I continue on my merry way.
Alright.
As merry as one can be for this precarious in increasingly less bridge situation.
Yes.
We're gonna make that ship fly.
Yes.
Whole situation could be avoided with making ships.
If you need a part for me I'm gonna change my readiness so it's if any of the any of the the groups that are within you know the. So Skervo Pyman or me and Clara because they're the only groups close to me.
Yes.
Are if any of them fall then I cloud steps to stop them falling. Basically just a intent just um an uh translucent platform just appears beneath them.
Gotcha. Um okay, now for the moment of truth.
So um. So Dig Doug takes a step. The bridge holds.
Alright. I suppose we continue. Onwards.
Yep.
I'm a go. This is the most precarious.
I'm prioritizing Skervo over Pyman because Skervo's weight could hold up Pyman but Pyman's weight couldn't hold up Skervo.
Yeah.
If Skervo goes, Pyman goes with him.
Yeah, yeah, she's.
But obviously if we all fall then I can only do that I I only have the side points to do that twice I don't have the side points to do it three times.
Skervo falls huh Skervo falls Pyman goes by with him like a yo-yo.
Alright, so you guys make it about a third across the bridge when you start. To notice the or or at least like when kind of not not necessarily panic starts to set in but. Just the quietness of the whole situation save be for the gussling wind that has now just. Become more apparent to you as you guys just continue to try to just walk forward. Um dust is starting to kick up. It might be a sandstorm.
Over the middle of a canyon?
Yes.
That's a very tall storm.
Need to.
I will pull on my.
A five hundred foot tall storm.
Yeah, I will pull on my goggles and give my bandana to Clara.
Yeah.
Uh Skervo has little. Skervo has little defense against this.
Pull up the. He has he has experience in storms but but we can but we'll have to see how he holds up.
It feels like to immune to sandstorm so.
Yeah, I really am, yeah.
Pokemon rolls.
And I feel like Thricrion would be like ground fighting type so they're also immune to sandstorm.
Um uh. Wait, we should probably we should probably uh try to pick up our pace at least a little.
But is the sandstorm sometimes coming from like sides of us behind us or ahead of us?
It seems to be coming from the canyon itself. Will itself come from this direction outward so it's pushing you or to. So it's pushing.
Not foreshadowing at all?
The group this way or at least pushing the bridge now that way as the bridge now begins to sway.
Let's walk a little bit faster going.
Yes.
And maybe.
Little faster but still careful.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yes, yes, increase increase pace a little bit but definitely a bit uh brisker.
Alright, I'm gonna need each of you to make a dex save.
A dex save.
As to not be blown off. Would I get advantage because I deliberately am hanging on to the rope?
Uh yes.
Okay, that's very important. Really, it changed nothing.
Oh, nat twenty.
Thirteen.
Okay.
Twenty-four.
Nat twenty Skervo.
Nine.
Nine.
Thirteen.
Um.
I'm blowing off I assume?
Uh you are not blown off because you have another body with you at the moment however your hat does fly off.
Not the hat.
I am going to use mystic cam to grab it.
Make him buy hats.
This will this will require another dex check.
This is great tech.
Yes.
I mean it's the same roll regardless. That is a thirteen.
Alright, you managed to get the hat.
Alright, I grabbed my hat back I'm gonna just like pull it back like I I wanna flavor does I grab it and pull it back like Indian or Joe style?
I just I just picture it just being like.
Hey, did it happen on a thirteen?
Uh on a thirteen?
Definitely, okay.
Good. Nat twenty Skervo the Skervo ain't gonna.
But I have my iCloud steps so I can I can save people that fall.
Yep.
Cause except for there he's too far away.
Oh, I'm behind you.
Oh, you're right behind I thought oh you're right behind me?
I was right behind you but it's her then you two then me then him.
Oh, okay.
Uh there's fifty there is at most fifty feet.
Dig Doug behind.
Yeah, so okay, so Tharren would still be able to.
We'd be alright if we make it around the orange. Uh so.
Like I'm being character pretender everyone gets blown off and.
Dig Doug and I are going.
The sky becomes very dark as more sand and dust start kicking its way across your face as it just. As it abrades your face with just a whole bunch of particles just well sand particles just coming out. From this wind as it just gets into everyone's eyes save be for you and you. Um everyone else though is.
Blinded?
Yes, is blinded for the time being.
Oh, Sk- oh, Skervo. He could you he could use a good sand blast hit it might get some of that rust off them.
That might be a bad thing on a bridge because you know the the rust might be one of the things holding them together.
Also, you'll get sand in your gears.
Yeah.
Oh, there's already sand in them.
More sand.
More sand.
Yeah.
Stick hold flat way off the cover plate gear gear box.
His gears already sound like busted bearings.
No, but if stick imagine like if a gear pulls off like a cover plate gear and gear box up the sandstorm is gonna get encumbered in sand it'd be like curses.
Alright.
Alright, everyone.
Um.
Everyone. Make another dex check.
I see.
Advantage from still holding on to the rail?
Oh yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-six.
Huh, that's what the guy imagined that was a nat one. That's a three of the die.
Really?
I went from crit fail to ten seventeen.
Um. Tharren, you begin to lose your footing as you listen as make one more dex check.
Advantage or regular?
Regular.
Okay, is it a check or a save?
It's a check.
Okay.
Acrobatics.
Acrobatics, that doesn't. That's okay.
Eight.
Oh my gosh, bro.
Now by fun.
You fall, or or at least like in a, okay, so I'm going to describe this, uh, so you lose your footing and on the way out, you try to grasp at the bar, which is the acrobatics check. Uh, but you meant, but what's it, it somehow loses your gra- well, somehow loses your reach as it sways during that period of time.
Oof.
And you had your ready to action, and um, do you, do you wanna do it?
Yes.
Alright.
Cloud step, see if he gets a spiral staircase of.
And that's how Tharren, and that's how Tharren nearly died this action.
We hit one.
We hit one, boys.
I'm gonna do that one more time.
Alright, did we, did we do bets? We didn't take bets, we all thought it, we all thought it was gonna happen.
Okay, I I I climb back up to bridge.
Ah, alright, can you see the steps, or are they invisible?
Oh, you think I said.
Uh, they're, they're visible.
Okay.
They look like, they look like um barriers of like white energy.
Alright, um, we're gonna, okay, you have one more dex save to make.
Save, okay, okay.
You sure you wanna use that one?
Yeah, I was like, nope.
It's a lot. I mean, it wasn't a legal roll, it didn't land off the table.
Yeah.
That was a sixteen, fifteen plus seven, twenty-two.
Alright, you managed to get yourself back onto the bridge.
Okay. I'm still alive.
Cut, cut me a wee bit close there, Tharren.
That was true. Um.
And as you, like, as you're climbing up, you see Ticker like facing towards you, clearly deep in concentration. And, and then like the instant you get back on, the steps just disappear.
Uh, thanks, that was you?
You're lucky I was keeping an eye on you.
Thank you, my friend. It's a long way.
Good save, Tharren, Mr. Ticker.
Hold up, wanna make some checks for a couple other characters? Alright. Uh huh, alright, so, you're almost to the end of the bridge, the sandstorm seems to be getting a lot worse. Now, I need each of you to make a dex check, disadvantage, unless you had advantage, and then it's just cancelled out.
Can I? So I have.
Challenge, is there anything else you guys wanna do?
I have a thing called whirlwind, can I use that to like?
Yes.
Uh, can I use master brother to counterbalance the wind of of that? Now, now that's getting really bad.
Is that a check, not a save?
Uh, hmm. If we're trying to not get non-adopted, I would argue, I would argue a saving throw.
We're going to sing. It's still going to be a saving throw, but if you do that, everyone gets a, we're gonna say a mechanical plus three to their saving.
Okay, that's, that's my intelligence modifier, so. Yes, I will do that, so, yeah, I will use um, I will use wind to basically force the same, like counterbalance the sandstorm.
We don't, we don't have advantage to this stuff, that's right.
No, disadvantage, unless you, and you're holding on to the rope, which you and I were, so you and I have a normal world.
I probably would be after the first wind hit, so.
Hey.
Um.
Uh, that would be a, uh, combining that with his thing and my stuff.
Twenty-three.
Your dex save plus his plus three.
Uh, hang on.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't go.
That's, that's uh, ten altogether.
Oh.
You.
Uh.
Please, I don't wanna die too.
And you'll fall off like a.
You can, you can cut the rope?
I can with my shoe.
No, okay, okay, I just wanna phrase it for a bit, okay, as Skervo tips over the side.
Box.
Uh, Paimon, make a strength check.
Oh my.
Wait, 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 if you cut the rope faster than he falls over.
Can I try to, to try to.
Wait, can I try to cut the rope for him?
Sure.
I'm gonna cut the rope around by the knot.
I think it'd be.
Hem broke past what, ten hit points? An AC of what?
Two.
There was two hit points and AC of ten.
The last of the one.
I don't think you can sneak attack like objects, can I?
Can you do at least two damage?
Sneak attack.
I know.
With a dagger?
I sneak attack a book, you can't, you can't sneak attack a book, it's kinda spying, doesn't it?
With a dagger, I mean, how.
What's your?
Oh, that's a movie I wanted to watch with you guys, we don't have time.
It's D four plus one.
Yes, yes, you, you can, you, if you hit, you hit, you you cut the rope.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, even with a one, I could have.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you cut the rope, um, Skervo begins to to fall into the abyss.
Even if I can.
Can I, can I, can I at the very least, I try to rascal onto something?
Even if I was.
I tried to rascal onto something.
Rascal onto something.
Let's roll a different one.
Yes, acrobatics check.
Yes.
Unless you wanna make it straight.
No.
No, I'm, I have, I have at least four D twenties.
This one is is usually cursed, my two plastic ones are cursed, this one just started to be bad.
So. As his joint completely fails.
Making a.
Alright, a- as your joint completely fails, um. Uh, so, uh, you begin to fall.
Uh, I have a rope and grappling hook.
Oh.
I have a rope and grappling hook, is it, uh, could use a hand, I I throw rope down to you.
Alright, uh, I I guess now do the same check again.
Oh.
Yes, you begin to fall into the abyss, and you blackout halfway down.
I have a question, I'm a character, I don't know if he'd actually do this. Would there be a way like, he could do something like, no, 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 that would define laws of physics.
Would you have? Do you have rope and grappling hook?
I do not.
It's like, if you have that, then you could just hook it onto the side of the the cliff. I'm like, well.
I ran on a feather fall, I didn't expect I'd be feather fall.
Come on, break any bridge from the abyss.
Well, I, I didn't expect.
Did you light it totally? What?
HP total?
Uh, my HP total is twenty-nine.
Okay, alright.
Five hundred feet is just twenty D six.
Um.
So you could die, or you could survive.
Yeah.
I'll maybe die soon.
Oh. Alright, for the time being, you blackout.
No, our captain.
Ah.
Our captain, also our ship.
Yeah, yeah, your, your shelter's gone.
Our free real estate.
So is the purple worm poison and anything else Skervo had on the ship.
Yep. Uh, alright, so, um. So the rest of you make it across the bridge, but there's one person missing.
Dig Doug.
You.
Hey, what's in there?
I've been punked me.
I can't climb down, I probably can't climb down fast enough to, you know, do anything.
I couldn't drive a mall any better than you could.
The storm is still raging, you probably have to seek shelter for the time being.
Oh, hang on, I'll grab, hang on, I'll grab my character piece. Yeah, you you are in the abyss.
Uh, so, doesn't any like natural formations that we could use for shelter, like rock, caves or trinkets or things?
Well, um, for the moment.
Best case scenario, I'm just gonna be buried and have to dig myself out again.
Do you want to go further, or do you want to just camp out here?
Anywhere where I can.
Do we have any camping support, we have, we have an outdoors pack, we have an outdoors.
Yeah, 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 you guys have the ability to make camp, you just cannot camp inside the Duchess.
I'm, well, I am in here.
The Duchess is.
Does Dig Doug have, I mean.
Five hundred feet away.
Two man, two men, we could put you and me, and we could have the two small people who are small, just, four of us, like in the town, I mean, we're not laying down, right? We could just sit there, sitting there.
You wanna ask Dig Doug?
What?
You wanna ask Dig Doug?
Does he have camping supplies?
I mean, he brought a camel with him.
Across the bridge?
Yes. Why you thought he'd just leave his camel?
I didn't realize, yeah, camel.
So the camel makes it, of course.
No, no, obviously the camel makes it while the warforged just goes right over with a nat one. Yeah, it's pretty wild, I'm an old wily coyote cartoon right now, as I stack dice.
You looked down. You looked down, why did you look down?
I didn't look down.
Clearly you did, cause otherwise you wouldn't have fallen.
I'm gonna retrieve my bandana. I, damn, I'm with the side points. I'm just gonna like watch from the edge of our camp over towards where the bridge was.
Okay, alright, then.
Um.
Just.
How far out does your uh telepathy go?
Hundred and twenty feet.
Hmm, so you'd have to climb more than halfway down and just be like, you and I?
Yeah. And I can't climb down in this sandstorm, that's suicide.
I set up, I set up the tent from our outdoors pack.
Yep.
So we're just gonna have to, gonna have to wait and see.
We're just four, us three plus the other child.
Wait and see if, wait and see if.
I assume Dig Doug has, has applied himself.
If his death, if he succeeds, we got saved, or if fails, we got saved.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like enough for you guys, if you want to.
Now, Ticker is just watching like the whole time.
A tent is a fine shelter.
He is not, he does not say a word, he does not say a telepathy word, he just watches out towards the canyon.
Yeah, alright.
I'm blinking.
Um.
Tharren.
Several hours pass and the sandstorm finally subsides at nighttime.
Do four hours pass?
Yes.
Okay.
Do mystics get their side points back from shorerest?
That was a, wait, four hours is long enough for an elf meditation, which means I could take a long rest. Try and get better than eighteen hit points.
This is the first time Skervo's taken significant damage in the campaign.
No, cause it's usually me.
That's hilarious.
He needs to make a dozen, his death saves, so.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna speak a dex save.
Uh, psionic red one.
Alright.
That's succeed.
Uh, hang on.
You don't get down anything to it.
What?
Your death saves just a straight D twenty roll, okay.
Psionic?
That is succeed though, so I only, side one.
Side one, so.
So sixteen, am I up or no? Uh, well, that's one of three.
When you finish a long rest.
What for you, is your long rest eight hours?
My long rest is eight hours.
So I'm the only one who had it, no, no, you, you have a six hour long, that's just. Four hours is enough time to take a long, uh, for me to take a long rest, so I will. I will use a hit die to to regain some hit point. Ooh, nice.
Question, could, since it's four hours, can I make, could I take the long rest and use the?
Six hours.
Yours is six hours.
Yeah.
I was like, take a, take a short.
Can you take a long rest if you're not dying?
Or take a short rest for the, to use it?
If you're not falling.
You can only do it if you're not dying.
Yes, I I guess like make two more dex saves.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll just roll them both.
Two for, two for deaths, so you have one pass, two fails.
Two fails. One pass, two fails.
Alright.
Okay, so if you, if you, if you get a nat twenty, you're safe, you get a nat one.
Alright.
Yeah, actually, if you get anything, blow the tankers, yeah.
Okay, so I, pretty much as soon as the sandstorm clears, I'm gonna start climbing down, I know it's nighttime, but.
Okay.
And one for life. One for life, two for death.
Um, alright, uh, and we're gonna say, yeah, that's long enough.
Long enough for, for what, another dex save or?
Please succeed, please succeed.
Uh, no, no, not another dex save, just, let's just dig one back.
Alright, oh.
Okay. Alright. Uh, you begin to climb down.
Is, is, the storm is clearing up?
Yes.
Uh, how are you climbing down? Do you have any climbing speed?
Uh, I have rope, I have.
Cause I have a grappling hook, I can set me to the ground, we could tie ropes together to make a longer rope.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you're gonna help me, then I'll do that, but he was gonna just climb down with a rope if he had to.
The rest of my rope's with him.
He would have climbed down.
Yeah.
I only have like four, I'm on me.
I have, I wait, if I have the outdoors, I have, I have two rope, and then there's the outdoors and the tank, we have three.
We have a hundred and fifty feet of rope.
Plus your rope, your rope.
Unless the ends.
Oh, good.
Plus any, yeah, rope, dig them, yeah, and.
I should have known with the flight over.
Does Dig Doug have rope?
Uh, of course Dig Doug has rope.
How much rope does Dig Doug have?
How much you wanna pay him?
Well, we just need a bar.
Dig Doug doesn't.
How much is he selling rope for?
He's selling rope for two silver for a length of fifty rope.
I will buy enough, I will buy three hundred feet of rope.
Which is six co- fifty foot coils, which six is two silver.
Yes, one silver, one, one gold, two silver.
Alright. Pleasure to do business with you.
We have five hundred feet of rope.
And I'm assuming he gave him his rocks back?
Yeah, I gave him his rocks back.
Alright.
Wait, wait, Dig, we need to borrow the bag of rocks, wait. On grappling, I set the grappling hook into the ground.
Yeah, we could get back up.
Cause we could. We have five hundred feet now.
And I have like a hole, so we can just.
World persuasion.
You can.
And since he knows, he got a nat twenty on my sense of motive, can he have advantage? So, cause he knows I wasn't gonna charge up in the issue in terms, so advantage.
Much better, eighteen.
Alright, all alone.
Okay, I I set the grappling hook into the ground, and I take giant bag of stones, I set them off the grappling hook as a weight.
Make a strength saving throw.
Save.
Yes.
Save.
It's a very heavy bag of rocks.
Oh, weird, is it, is someone gonna help you with this bag?
I will.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, obviously, I'm gonna help him.
Yeah. I bet it's them.
I'm just gonna hang out with Clara.
Yeah.
That's out of luck.
Yeah.
Just watching everybody go down.
Clara is.
Okay.
Clara is probably wondering where the captain is.
You are.
Yeah, you are crushed to death by the rocks.
Where? Where?
And then I'm, I'm, hey, eh, um.
Where's your girl?
Down there.
You and Clara, why don't you sit on this bag?
Why, we weigh nothing.
Why?
Extra mass, extra mass is far better, oh, make sure it doesn't move anyway.
What, what are you even doing?
We weigh jack shit.
We are going after the captain, and if you will stop and, and we will defeat anyone who get, who stops us.
Oh.
What's there to stop you?
On the bright side, you guys, they'll lose the cockatrice.
On the other side of the canyon.
I guess I'll just take these guys off the map.
Oh, yeah, we did lose them, it was like, well, get some.
You have to lay down kind of recklessly.
Okay.
Like kind of faster than I normally would.
I, I do find it funny that.
I have a forearm, so I imagine I could lay faster than.
Yes, yes.
I will go down after he goes down, so he can go down and I will go down.
I have a. Uh, okay, so I have a dex, okay.
You're pulling a saving cry for your captain, Captain Skervo.
So, my, like the whole rope concept, so, it would normally be a, okay, so, it would normally be an advantage, you got that thing with you and you're doing it, but you're also doing it fast, so.
Cause I know I, I'm limited on time.
So we're gonna put you.
So just a neutral dex save?
Neutral.
Uh, you need a good roll, yes, that is a really good roll, that's a twenty-three.
Alright.
I climbed down after him, but not as fast as him, I climbed out at a normal pace.
Alright, uh, the two of you climb down to the bottom.
Okay.
Alright.
And, let's see.
Go back along the bridge to where?
To two, where Skervo would have followed, um.
Skervo would have followed.
And you search, and you search, make.
Investigation?
Either investigation or perception.
Can I have?
Perception will help you find something.
Can I have advantage if I use my telepathy to search for his mind?
Okay. Because he has, you'd be able to tell it is four.
Cause his mind is still alive, assuming he's still alive.
Yeah.
At the very, at the very least, you, you'd at least hear the static.
If I have plus seven perception? Yes, I have plus seven perception.
How much does mine, mine's plus two.
He's only a fourteen.
I have a sixteen.
Alright, you guys search for.
I mean, Warforged is a pretty obvious sight.
Hours, yes, um, and you cannot find him.
Do we find anything?
Uh, like, like looking straight up to find the bridge and like looking straight underneath, like, like.
You find his habit.
I'm gonna keep searching.
Alright.
Take the hap, girl, and cup in your head.
Oh.
I like that.
You're, you're, you're bad, you're, you're bad.
Hours pass is. Halfway, okay, it's next morning, Paimon, what, what, what are you doing?
I'm probably sleeping.
Just chilling in the tent?
Yeah, with Clara, I'm just, I'm just chilling.
What's around eleven AM?
Eleven AM, okay, I'm waking up.
Then, you realize that the only people with you are, uh, oh, I I guess Pearl's also there.
Oh, I forgot about Pearl, we all forgot about Pearl.
It's like Jerry.
She's the new Jerry.
Who are just like, wait, wait, we forgot about so and so, camera, and, they were here the whole time.
So, people like in camp, or you, uh, Dig Doug, Pearl, and Clara.
Dig Doug.
Clara. Who does not have another blood bottle, by the way.
Yes. Yes, she drank through the other one.
I like, who do you, who did Clara drink from this time, was it you?
Yeah.
If it was me, I'd be dead.
I don't know how much she drank.
I feel, I feel a little like.
Find, didn't find you, but just a dry, not crispy way.
She's been going around.
Oh, now, cut back to a certain individual, um, you, wake up.
Ah, yeah.
Alright. Alright, Skurbo's playing back online.
It seems, it seems that you are in a weird ramshackled adobe. Structure, you don't exactly know where you are, there seems to be wood and there seems to be some, some. Individual in the corner of the room, and he seems to be tinkering with some things, it looks like your arm.
For, uh, what part of me is still, what, what all is still functional, um, alright, fir- first of all diagnostics check, uh. It sounds like my arm is taken, is segmented.
Yes, it fell off like with that napline.
Okay, so what, what other si- what other systems are still online, do I still have any other limbs?
Uh, they appear, okay, they appear to look better than they did at episode one, one zero.
Alright, uh, if I'm able to move at all, I'm going to quickly check to make sure my Duchess is still with me.
Alright, when you try to check with your right arm, uh, you realize that's the arm that's missing, so you check with your left arm. It's still there. However, your hat's missing.
Uh, so.
You two, after going through the entire morning, you still can't find it.
Do we find any tracks or traces?
Uh, you do find, well, okay, actually because of the sandstorm, now you don't find any tracks.
Yeah, Ticker doesn't have to sleep, he is not giving up.
I think he's not here, perhaps he fell further, that's why I point off in that direction.
Seems like a sensible place to search. I'll go up in that direction.
Alright, you go up in that direction, do you, do you follow with him?
Uh.
Like it's right from the wind was blowing, I imagine.
Alright.
I'm sorry, Manny.
Uh, for a short while.
Uh, you're just sitting here not doing much.
I'm doing all.
Oh.
I'm sure he has to do this solo, he will, you know that.
Two hours pass, you guys find nothing.
Oh, I'm like, he is not here, perhaps he's buried too much. I I take off my hat. Like he rests the peace.
Would a sandstorm like that last alone, you don't, hundred twenty feet of sand?
But I care if someone, care about someone on the mental cell.
I was like, no, no, this is, quick moment of silence.
No idea.
Okay, off to fighting the goal, we're not.
We're, we're gonna say it's like. We're gonna say like it's eight feet of sand.
Yeah, so if he were buried, I would have sensed at least a remnant of his mind.
But he is clearly not here.
Who is that you're referring to? Okay, I didn't know you were still doing yellow at the beginning.
Yeah, I'm still trying to search for him telepathically as well as physically.
Yeah, well, I'm like, well, he's obviously not here. I returned to the rope and began climbing up.
Alright.
Keep searching.
You go, are you going to stay down here and look endlessly?
You may not see me again, and if you do, the captain will be with me.
Well, I'm going to head up to the others, we'll, we'll challenge the.
But what about Clara?
Skurbo would have wanted her taken care of.
I know.
That's what they're in store.
I know, I'm.
Yeah.
Like Ticker isn't, he may not necessarily search the entire church forever, but he will search for a very long time.
Yeah.
Alright.
Like he will search for days on end before he gives up.
Alright.
Does he remind you of so many movies when one character falls down, he's like?
No.
Yeah, no, no, that's basically what just happened to Skurbo.
In all honesty, because, part of the reason is because Ticker feels guilty for letting you fall. He used his energy to keep the, the storm at bay, and he couldn't use his energy to save you.
After many hours, you 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 see, talking to.
When you get up, uh, Byvan and company are enjoying lunch.
Oh, you're back.
Yeah.
Where's the other?
He is still looking for Skurbo. We found no sign of him down there, other than his hat. Which Ticker now has.
Did you mention Ticker's wearing Skurbo's hat now?
You're wearing two hats.
No, two options, normally he's wearing Skurbo's hat.
I had one hat. Free hat!
He's wearing his hat until he finds it.
Oh.
Actually, no, I'll keep it in the bathroom. He's in the bathroom always with six. I'm totally just gonna be like, I'm, I know what I'm gonna say as soon as I find him.
Uh, back to Ticker.
Not, not, not Ticker. That is Ticker, yes.
Sorry, back to Skurbo.
Alright, uh, so, since my processes seem to be working. Where? I'm just, uh, first of all, I'm actually gonna, uh, what, what is the, what is the creature entity and or person of interest? Who is working on my, uh, on my segmented limb?
Perception check.
Wow, this is not Skurbo's day.
Alright, oh, so, the, the person like, like uh turns to you, realizes, oh, I think he's awake.
Not yet, he's ten.
As you look like him, well, a- a- as you, not, not like him, as you look at him, um.
But I know.
He's kind of this older looking gentleman.
All three of these are just what I'm playing.
He has, he has, uh, I I guess like descriptions of him is that he has this very long kind of like white mustache and he's just. Just long white hair, he has a brown hat with uh like, like one of those like ten gallon hats that with gold trimming across the side. And he wears a multi-colored poncho.
Alright, very colorful individual.
He's clearly. No, he's, no, he's Jacob.
Might I ask?
Jacob in the Technicolor Dreamcoat.
Might I ask your name? Might I ask your name?
Uh, yes, um, well, I do reckon that my name be, uh, S.
S.
No, I forgot whose name is.
You forgot, you forgot mystery man's name.
The name be Martin Robbins.
Alright, mysterious savior, Martin.
Was it, what was the name of your betrayer?
Mister Turner.
Turner, okay, thought it was wrong.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no, 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 Turner's.
Like this was a descendant, I know, I was thinking this might be a descendant.
Yeah.
If I, he comes across Turner.
Just any Turner.
We, we just all, how do I sound like we're.
Alright, yes.
There he is.
Yeah, all needs to mention is like, oh, hey, Mr. Turner.
You done, you done found yourself down on that door stair now, didn't you?
Yes, I, I fell, then me. Then me arm failed. And you seem to have it.
Yes, I do reckon and I do seem to have, I bet I could fix it up right for you. Do you play vittles? I like vittles.
Wait, wait, viddle is in the insert?
Vittles.
Viddle with these nuts.
You just couldn't resist, could you?
Absolutely, man, uh, anyways.
Vittles are.
Well, not, uh, yeah, no.
Like a viddle with a V or viddle with an F? Okay.
Viddle is.
Viddle with these nuts.
Okay, okay, I, I got set with viddle, like, like I said.
I got no work.
Middle of the viddle, not viddle.
Okay.
I do a little bit of viddle too.
Viddle with these viddle nuts.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just quite confused, cause you seemed, cause you seem to have gone and fixed, and fixed me up, and I'm just.
Not problem.
And I'm not sure I've encountered some.
Oh yeah, you're done, I wonder.
Yeah, uh, well, I mean, that goes without saying.
You just real worked it.
You seem.
No, I'm just commenting about it.
You seem to. Cause. I hope you don't mind me asking, what it is your, what is your plan to do with me?
It sounded like you were saying viddle with these nuts.
Well, I just thought it would be a very nice thing to do, or, or at least like to get you all back together stranger.
You know, it's not often, uh, uh, actually, first of all, I'm gonna roll an insight.
Insight.
That's a nineteen.
Alright, let's check my actual insight check, it is.
Okay.
Uh, thirty twenty.
Alright, um, then it's, you get the same feeling, yeah, you just, you just try and be a good Samaritan type, yeah.
You know, it's been a long time since I've encountered some, someone so selfless.
Well, I mean, you do work with me. Which definitely does not help in that regard.
And he was betrayed like seven hundred years ago, so.
Yeah, that's a very long time ago.
A grudge he very clearly still holds. Proof, you saw how he punched out of that wall?
Um, after seven hundred years.
Or was that, oh?
That's like my entire lifespan.
Well, that seems very unfortunate for a fellow such as yourself.
I was. Where am I, why am I waiting? I fell off, I fell off the bridge and. I wonder if the crew is looking for me.
Probably what I'll do is I'll do a systematic searching pattern of this entire area, and basically I'll be.
Oh, okay, uh, uh, when you do that, uh, this.
Basically, I, I. Cause I'll probably start with a systematic search of this area, because I know it's an enclosed area, and then go out, so.
So, uh, around this area, you find, okay, we're just gonna like, look like a couple of things right there.
That's on top of the cliff.
It is, but you can see on top of it because it's daytime now, but, yeah, well, actually, it's not exactly on top of the cliff, it's.
Built on the cliff?
Built into the cliff.
That's well.
There seems to be a village and there seems to be a small waterfall that goes down.
Okay, is there like a staircase leading up or a ladder leading up?
Um, yes.
Okay, I will, I will stop at the bottom of the ladder. Hello? And I'll just send that as like a broadcast with telepathy.
Alright, the, a- 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 as a broadcast, like a fellow, like, um, most. Not, not, not a fellow, not, not, not a fellow mystic, but a fellow telepath, like, answers the call, yes? Yeah.
I'm looking for a friend, a warforged. I believe he is down here somewhere, have you seen sight of a warforged near here, a pirate?
What's a pirate?
Okay, I'll rephrase, I'll rephrase that, a bandit.
Um. Bandits. Are you a bandit?
No.
Oh, are, are we talking like? Are, are you talking like one of those furry schmucks?
No, a warforged.
What's a warforged?
A mechanical being.
Oh. What's a mechanical being?
A humanoid creature made entirely of metal and artifice, that is magic of machinery.
Humanoid, what's that?
Human shaped.
Human shaped, what are humans?
Oh, good god.
Who are you?
I am.
Why do you speak with such funny words?
Funny words, magic man.
I like your funny words.
Uh, he looks over the edge, it's a thrak cream.
A fellow thrak cream, just looking for a friend. I'll say this in thrak cream now that I'm on the.
Ah, okay, ah, you're starting to speak less weird now, okay, um, a friend, yes. Um. You're looking, what exactly are you looking for?
A metal man.
A metal man, um, we have not seen a metal man.
Do you know anyone who might have?
Hmm, there seems to be a lot, a lot of chatting up there, they come back, no, we haven't seen a metal man.
Insight.
Alright.
Uh, that's still only an eight.
Uh, you don't know whether or not they're truthful on that. Alright.
Okay. I'm gonna specifically ping for Skurbo, since I know his like, like signature.
Yeah, he, he knows my, he knows my radio frequency.
Um, as you ping for it, you can not find.
Thank you for your time, I will be moving on.
Okay, then. We know.
We know.
Specifically get that bag, talk to savage.
Like your funny words, magic man.
I like your funny words, magic man.
Oh, alright, um, what does the rest of the party do?
Well, I've climbed back up and I'm like, I'm really like, well, we searched around down there, all we found is hat. Uh, Clara. Ticker went, we're still down there trying to find something.
Well, I, I, I mean, without looking towards Clara.
That could have been you.
I could.
She's asleep at the moment.
I almost fell off.
So adorable.
Hey, watch it.
The, the.
I'm like, when the lamp works, the only people who enter, who, who reunite. The only people who are left are the two who hate each other.
Are the people who hate each other.
We should probably head to the bone. I had big Doug his rocks back.
Dick Doug takes them back.
I look at the hook and the road. Should we leave it?
Or while I'm going to light one of the bug repellent incenses.
I don't think that works, it only works on non-magical, normal insect, not on thrak cream.
I know, but I bought them because of the duckers. And I'm gonna put it right where the rope is.
Well, I thought you said you wanted to leave it up for the bug man, why, why are you running the bug repellent?
Figure it's that, which is that awful smell.
Meanwhile, meanwhile, he has like a backpack of Skurbo's pieces, I like smell.
It's like a tuba.
I don't smell enough.
You're like, hey, I'm just going around, I'm seeing.
If we suggest to you that I am totally doing that. I am totally doing a tubaquacy creepy situation.
Oh.
Oh, this.
I haven't moved yet.
Yes, it's getting towards like evening as.
We head off with.
Those two finally make it to.
Us two plus everyone else up top.
I guess we gotta mark them.
Yeah, yeah, will you be his book for the party and then the rest?
Yeah, yeah.
That for you and then wherever he is.
Um, region unknown.
Region unknown.
Whole region now, no, uh, it's, it's like, uh, so. Um, and so you make it towards the grove, it's a giant selection of cactus.
Lots of cactus here.
Yes.
Sounds suspiciously like your Minecraft world.
Yes, um, it does, uh, there is a, in, in like this, well, in this area, you do finally see like. The, well, you do see the blue dragon skeleton bones, and you do see a singular adobe house.
To the house.
Investigate the home.
Yeah, you open the door first, like you always do.
I checked the door for traps. That's an eighteen.
Okay.
He rolls good on the door that's not trapped.
The, the door is not trapped.
Okay.
Alright.
Hello, is anyone in there?
Someone's knocking at the door.
Are you gonna get that? Lovely color. How often do you get guests?
Ah.
Are there, um, windows in your building?
Yeah, there's, there are windows.
Okay, I wouldn't peek.
Oh, you see the little mice's head, but a- a- as.
You see.
And uh, Martin Robinson like uh goes for the door.
Yeah, can we say the wind was blowing in this direction? Or no, it was blowing in that direction.
It was blowing in that direction.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
See, I'll, I'll, I'll just, probably I'll system, I'll research this area and then that'll probably take me multiple days, so.
Alright.
Alright.
And that'll probably wind up with me coming back up.
Well, if I, that's, that's, that's Skurbo was exactly where you were going.
Yeah. Yes, he didn't know that though.
I know, I know, he's gonna feel frustrated.
So I'm guessing I see Skurbo, right?
Well, it's just like, each square is what, what am I?
We, we lock, we lock eyes.
Big squares, I'm, yeah, but I'm searching them thoroughly.
Yeah.
Slow.
In mind, I have to, I have to search everyone hundred and twenty foot radius. In mind, I have to, I have to search everyone in a twenty foot radius to think for Skirbo.
Alright, so uh I I what do you mean?
What the heck is, how are you up here, you fell off the tree?
Had Martin answered the door yet?
See, he, yeah, Martin answered the door, it was like.
Well, open the door, I say, give me like, thank god.
Oh, in front of you, yeah, you see like uh, you see like this older looking human with.
Ah, I say, give him like, huh, how did you get up here, you you fell off, you fell way down. We we look before, we found your hat by the way, take a message. He's looking for you at the bottom of the canyon by the way. How did you get up here? Also, who are you?
I have.
Wow, my name is Martin Robinson.
He's probably still holding Skirbo's arm.
Yeah, he's still kind of holding.
So that's what that, yeah, well, of course, of course, he fell off, but how, I'm not surprised it didn't fall off soon, you got bucket, rusty bucket of bones.
I think you can gather these, these were the crew thing I was talking about earlier.
I believe I do.
Now, how did you get from way down there and I just go off in the direction of the canyon, down here.
One thing, one thing. One thing at a time. Where is Mister Ticker?
He's looking for you right down there, because you fell off way down there, and how did you end up here, we found your hat by the way.
Oh, does Ticker have it?
Yes, he's in his bag of holding, he must help.
Oh.
I'll have to get that back.
Where, actually, and and second of all, how how did I get up here? I fell down the cliff, where is here?
They always, the the skeletons are over there.
Well, I believe this is my house.
Ah, pointing off towards the bones, it'll be like skeletons, skeletons right there.
Hmm. Funny, I was heading in this direction anyway, funny how things work out.
Truly bizarre.
You're just, I just find it hilarious that you that you spend like hours searching. Tick, yeah, Ticker going, Ticker leaving on his own to go s- to go find the lost captain. Only only for them to find Skirbo, having a pleasant conversation with some old man.
Oh, like.
Yes.
Bloody winter drow. What are you doing up here?
Yeah, um.
How did you get him from way down there to up here?
Well, brought me here obviously.
Yeah.
I have my ways, it's like, it's just just some rope, you know?
But we were right there at the, you go down in the middle of the sandstorm.
Well, well, yeah, I was down there to begin with.
What were you doing down in the middle of the sandstorm?
Well, because I had some people to talk to.
What kind of people, what?
Ah, a funny little, hmm, I believe in your tongue, they call them uh thrite cream.
Oh. We have one in our in our group, he's a telepath. Looks like that, but but different color skin.
Oh.
Careless.
Blue.
Ticker is, Ticker is blue.
Tell you what, you guys want to know something? Hmm, you guys want to know? Well, of course.
Well, if you'd, well, if you'd be so, well, I'd hate to impose.
You, you don't even eat?
It's fine.
To be. And he does sit, admittedly, I'm not sure I have a choice in the matter, he still has my arm.
This is true. I reckon I can do with a few more guests.
I ap- I apologize for any inconvenience they caused.
Oh, no, no, this this is fine.
Oh, this is.
Yeah, go find another.
Probably. Just for just for whatever reasons.
First, while we have the skeletons, we get them.
While they're in their dinner, I want that to be when Ticker finally arrives like there.
Oh, I think we're traveling like another day or so.
Yeah.
Um unless you guys are spending like a couple of days there.
Well, we gotta, we gotta go check the skeleton for for the orb.
Well, you're.
Let's go check the skeleton.
Well, 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 we were, well, we were going to, we were going to check the skeleton because of the rumors that the skeleton moves.
You, your legs still work? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's that's why we came here, because I figured it might have something to do with the fog and the orb, because they mentioned. This might be the, this guy might be the god uh that they mentioned in the previous episode.
Yeah, but you, your legs still work, Captain?
I believe, I think they do.
It's still got one function again, so while he fixes the other, I'm gonna go check the skeleton.
I don't, I think I'll stay here for now, I still have a few more questions for this gentleman.
You can ask questions in a minute, let's go check the skeleton before it moves again. We have to go hunt it all over again.
Well, first, well, first of all, I wa- I heard local legends that the, that the skeleton moves, does it?
Skeleton, you need the dragon tail down there?
Yes.
Yeah, it moves.
See, let's go check the skeleton before it moves again.
I was rather curious as to how, but it only moves at night from what I hear.
Well, if you should be waking up, about an hour or so.
See, we got now before the skeleton moves, go check skeleton.
Hmm, more, like, the thing is, is that how the skeleton moves was how Skirbo wa- was what Skirbo wanted to know.
Well, you could ask that, we check the skeleton first.
Anyways, um. Oh, I sup- well, I suppose I'll. Well, it seems that Mister Taran's being rather pushy and.
Okay, we can go this way.
I suppose I'll be back in a few, if that's alright with you.
Or you could stay here and I'll go check the skeleton by myself.
There's people be waiting here either way.
I immediately just turned around and head out the door and just like, you got what you wish, I'm checking the skeleton, I head to the skeleton.
I uh. I follow in a, in the barely, in a barely functioning manner.
Okay.
I mean, I'm at, I am at one hit point and I did have a nasty fall, granted, this guy has.
So you're more, so you're more cautious then?
Yes.
Okay.
I approached the skeleton.
Um. Roll me a perception check.
Oof, the skeleton is made out of bone.
Uh no, uh what you fail to notice.
It's three.
Is um, i- i- is that you misstep on a rock and you take. Use this one. Uh you take three points of piercing damage as you get hit by a cactus.
Hit by a cactus or step on a cactus?
Uh no, you trip and you fall on a cactus.
I thought you were pulling like tac tars out.
Well, well. Besides, those are better at running than waiting.
And the campaign about the cactus actively attacked you.
Oh, it'll happen.
And they tried to eat you.
Uh, oh, it'll happen, why do you, why do you think we haven't seen uh, why do you think we haven't seen Gretchen and uh Robnar in a while?
Because they went off on a week long excursion?
No, because they got ate by a cactus.
Well, I picked myself back up off the cactus and watched the fight now.
Alright.
Miss.
And then like continue towards the skeleton.
Mister Taran, I advise you watch your step.
Alright.
Well, I'm not like, you know, storming towards it, I'm just walking at a normal pace.
Alright, uh so you guys now see the skeleton. Oh, did you, I I assume you want to be like thorough with your search, right?
Yeah, I am, I'm just like, you said it was like a day, it would, if I thoroughly searched this entire area, I would be like a day, it would be like a day until.
Trying to remember like what else is down there that you'll figure out, um. Never mind, you you don't find anything of particular value.
Yeah.
Um.
I believe.
Be like there, or at least, probably, I don't know.
Yeah, probably, well.
And using stealths and advantages, trying to like avoid large predators the whole time and stuff, you know? Fighting what I don't have, fighting what I can't avoid, it's like little, little, little stuff what I can't avoid.
Right.
Which, you know, would fall under like. They'll fall under just like montage type stuff, I imagine.
Gotcha.
But it's like, oh. I seen like some, you know, some some desert mon- some weak desert monster attacks. Ticker defeats it, end of the end of encounter.
Um, we're 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 gonna say, uh, yeah, yeah, you you defeat like a couple of scorpions.
Yeah.
That were sizable, but but not giant scorpions.
Sovereign scorpions, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Anyhow, we get to discuss.
Yeah, as like, um, what was it? Forgot the name of the song. Shoot, I had, um.
Martin?
We're gonna say the devil wears a suit and tie, just plays in the background.
Off the devil went down to Georgia?
Uh, no. They're both western songs.
With fiddle.
Uh. Oh, but yes, okay, so you two are at the skeleton, using. Now, since you're a lot closer to it, you realize this is incredibly large.
Well, I can tell that much at this distance, uh what?
Yes.
I searched, I wish to search the skeleton for anything interesting of theirs.
Okay.
That's right.
Perception.
Well, this started with investigation.
Oh, oh, investigation, in which case that would be, in which case that would be a.
Oof, that's a.
Do you want to use some white dice?
Seventeen.
What?
Do you wanna use some white dice?
Ah, this one has cursed being it.
Uh, alright, so.
Seven seventeen.
You don't notice anything particular strength about the skeleton?
Part of it, I keep going.
It looks like a normal dragon skeleton, even though you've probably never seen a normal dragon skeleton before. Or this is a normal blue dragon skeleton, you, on the other hand, you start.
For some reason has.
Yes, um, uh, so we're we're gonna say it's like that giant turtle that you.
Awesome, I am sure you want me to curse your guys.
Um, that 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 guards like the secret, uh uh, the secret entrance to.
Unagree, that keep your curse.
I don't know, um, uh, the one piece, there we go.
Underground.
But yes.
It was the worst bloody treasure I ever found, it was just a one piece bikini.
And the goat then said, uh, the 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 real treasure was the friends we made along the way.
Yeah, just shows his crew back in the day, every single one of them.
Bikini bottom.
Hmm, leaves. But uh anyways, what about these bones?
Uh you you, this is different from the other one, but there's like runic engravings like on each individual bone structure.
Let me check the skeleton, yep, it's skeleton.
I'm rolling an arcana, which for some reason, Skirbo rolled a nineteen.
Um, it's similar to a lich.
That's why I worried it was a g.
Trap, actually, we don't have that.
Back, so starts backing away.
You have uh thirty minutes till it gets up.
Yeah, yeah, Mister Taran.
Hmm, yes.
Right.
Where and why?
For now, just to the nice, to Mister Martin's house.
Okay, you added half the question, what about the why?
Good, Skirbo's over.
I'm just like walking in that direction.
Skirbo's up. Skirbo's already booking it.
Dude, why, what what you freaking out about, boy, what's your problem?
Skirbo's already gone.
Well, this is me shouting at you, as I'm just walking, dude, what's your problem? Did you hit your head on a rock or something on the way down? Scrangled your wires or something? Let me take a take a look at that.
By line, back to the uh house, you are enjoying a nice.
How far away is that skeleton from the house?
Uh thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, okay, so you can't hear me shouting in here.
Um, but but at the house, you're enjoying a nice, um, let's see, a nice bowl of chili with a lot of cheese.
She eats more than just cheese.
Alright, um.
Out of curiosity, more than just cheese? Everyone eats more than just cheese?
I have trash in my bag, man.
Yes, and she's about to skip on a free meal.
Yeah.
However, it is mostly cheese. It's it, it's like a little bit of chili with.
Oh, so it's a cheese with chili, chili with cheese.
Mark down lips dry.
Yes.
It's a bowl of cheese and some chili, not a bowl of chili with some cheese.
It's called a Dracolich.
Yep.
Uh Dracolich, but we don't know it's called.
Well, yeah, but like out of character, we can call it a Dracolich.
Yeah.
The skeleton is a sleeping Dracolich.
Yeah, so uh, yeah, that's a main quest, all things, all things considered, considering it's right god damn near.
Apologies.
It is a worryingly close distance.
Right. Um, shoot, let's see, oh, we put Yasuo back at the house, you just like see Skirbo running, like shut the door, like.
He's just reading. He's looking, yeah, he's looking around to make sure Clara and Pineapple are in here.
Clara's finally awake.
Oh, hey, huh. Oh, did you have a nice sleep, Clara?
I I think so.
Oh, that's good, that's, that's that's not bad. He's he's peering out the window.
Where's Theron?
I walk in like ten minutes later, Skirbo, what 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 did you freak out about, you hit your head on a rock or something?
I I immediately grab, grab him by the mouth. It's just.
I just jumped off. Did you hit, did you hit your head on a rock or something, what you freaking out about?
I remember they were headed soon. There were runes on that dragon.
He's speaking up.
I knew where the party was headed out.
Yeah, so.
Let me guess, I arrived about this time.
I believe.
You arrived about this time.
Yeah, yeah, you should, you should, you come in all defeated.
No, yeah, you you like look out, like see Ticker walking towards the, towards the house, kind of dejected looking.
Yeah.
I don't wanna call it, I don't wanna call it, oh, your hair finally, we got it.
Okay, no, no, here here's what happened, here's what happens, Skirbo look looks out, sees Ticker. Immediately runs out, grabs Ticker by by the collar and falls inside the house.
In in case you didn't notice, we got it, up here.
Just, just, just. And just give him a, just give him a nice good rough inside as Ticker, as Ticker's expression is probably replaced by.
Yes. I wasn't looking at, I was agreeing, yes.
Or alive? Ah, yeah, yes, uh.
I'm just not going to fight you on that.
Yes, uh, this time gentleman, uh, Mr. Martin.
Tom me.
Uh, most importantly, however, it's probably.
Besides skeleton. What's the special about skeleton, why are you freaking out about it, boy, did you hit your head on the way down or something?
Um, in the distance, you hear like some groaning sounds, a- a- as like.
Skirbo's peering out the window.
The skeleton is just starts to get up in the distance, it it's like this is a kind of comical moment. There, it's like, why are you guys arguing, as like.
Well, it's just a pile of bone.
It's like Ticker and Skirbo like.
I have a camera showing Theron and like.
Behind him, behind him. What are you talking, it's like getting up behind him, it's just a pile of bone.
And then he turns around and it.
Exactly.
Oh.
As it's rising up like freaking Godzilla.
Why is it doing that? That's a lich. Oh. Be really nice if you could help me fly up now.
It's probably, I I wonder if anyone, anyone else even knows what a lich is.
I think Ticker would know what a lich is.
Really, what's her, her chaos and like.
Yeah, it's just.
That's a lich.
I thought the secret of Dracolichdom was lost.
Why are you lost? I don't know who you're talking to.
I'm just saying that out loud, it's like it's not really lost.
This, I think there were the dragons left that.
What does the, what does the terrifying pile of bones do?
Um, it roars despite the fact that it has no organs and then. Like just prepares its rim, it's like its tattered wings and then just darts into the sky. Like a lightning bolt.
Why is it going? Do we see where the skeleton lies off, which direction it goes?
Yes.
Which direction it go?
It's heading, okay, um, for all intensive purposes, this is supposed to be that way, so.
So we just, we 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 relabel the letters.
It's heading north.
It's heading that way.
Yes.
Like due north or?
Due north.
So saying this is the dragon just kind of heading somewhere around here.
Heading, oh, that's my wrong arrow right here.
That actually.
Looks more Dracolichy.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, there we go, oh. By the way, Captain, he holds up the hat, you dropped this.
I give Mister Ticker. Takes it, takes it back and struggles to replace it one armed.
There's no, there's no, there's no T in lich.
But, but. Probably took Ticker a moment to realize he's missing an arm. Just, and the other guy's just holding the arms, like getting carried on it.
He just looks back and goes, he's like, okay.
If they stop me.
I'm not really good with this whole mechanical business. I just want to try something new. That's respectable. Perhaps I could be of assistance. Well. I do reckon that you could possibly help me with this, or nah, I'll leave it to you. You look like you know what you're doing. It gives you the arm.
Yeah, yeah. I think you're full check, I imagine?
Yep.
Roll to give, roll to give Skervo a hand.
No. Uh, with a twelve.
I managed to get it functioning again like it was?
Yeah, you got it. As normally as it was before.
And then I just reattach it to Skervo?
Yep. A few bolts here, a few, oh, sit, a few cut wires, just reattach them.
Oh. Thank you much, Mister Ticker. Back to the flying terrifying matter at hand. So I feel that might have something to do with the mist. And why everyone worships it as a local god.
Yeah, that 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 again, that would.
What what did the locals call it again? It was like?
Blue thunder.
Yeah, blue thunder. Uh, Martin, what do you know about the local legend?
Blue thunder. Well, I think it's, well, I I tell you what, I do believe that it's a bit over exaggerated. I mean, well, that's just me.
Uh, you guys missed it, but when he said it it's over exaggerated, I just looked, but anyways, uh. So, but uh but they describe it as a so they describe it as being a, wait, didn't they describe it as being vengeful? Malevolent even?
Oh, I guess that is what the locals say about it.
Alright. Uh.
I met a local tribe of Thrycreed in the in the canyon on my search. Perhaps they know more about the legends.
Alright, perhaps, I'm more worried about whether or not I'm.
What specifics do you want?
Well, well, I don't, well, I wonder if it had anything to do with the, if you know about whether or not it had anything to do with the mist up north, up to the northwest.
The mist, you say?
Yes.
Hmm. It has, hmm, you could say they are being connected to one another, but nah, 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 can't say that right now.
Hmm, what do you mean, why? What can't you say right now?
It's not necessarily information that that that'll bother with you, uh, individuals at the moment. And may I ask, why is that? Eh, old legends, stuff like that, it's more of that superstitious kind.
People believed me as superstition. Hmm, go ahead and tell it, there may be some something to it. There, there's, in my experience, there's almost always truth to legend. And I should know, I'm approximately two thousand years old. How old is that?
Well, you see the globe is.
So you're saying it's not flat?
No.
Oh, it'd be flat, you could just walk right off the edge if it were flat.
Exactly.
It'll be a bad thing. I said, I said all the way around the world, it wasn't flat when I said it.
You know what, I did it.
I get what you're saying.
Uh, it it'll do.
If any, anything, I think it's at least a cylinder. It's a rectangular prism.
Ah, that's what, that's what you do with a map, it's like you just folded it like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like, just, just.
Ah, yes, every time you fold a map, the the world.
Yeah, yeah. It's just.
The interesting part is getting over the corners.
Dun dun dun.
It's a, it's a pyramid, the world is a pyramid, clearly.
Anyway.
That's right.
Anyways, enough about ridiculous planetary shapes, uh, more about, uh, whether or not this guy responded to Skervo's, Skervo's question about, uh.
Myth and legend.
Myth and legends.
Yeah.
Well. As he just continuously just pondered whether or not he should tell you. Ah, maybe another day.
Hmm, you got something else to do. And, another day, you're time to see us again.
He looks each of you up individually. I think you'd be wanting something eventually.
I guess if we need something.
Well, what you possibly have would be one.
I think I've said too much.
Uh, can I roll an insight on that?
Alright, roll insight.
I'll roll two.
Bummer.
Fourteen.
Sixteen.
Fifteen.
Alright, um, with the sixteen, um. You you know he's hiding something. But you don't know exactly what it is.
I I must communicate well, but like, kind of, I'll leave it in whisper.
I think he knows where the orb is. Been backed by the question, uh, uh. What all there, Missy?
I'm just gonna catch your arm and just try to block my mom.
Lock it down, both of ya.
What do I do?
Yeah, you weren't supposed to say that, you idiot.
It's, uh, uh.
Why didn't they get whispering?
The overall reaction.
Well, yeah, he just like is taking it back, I was like, what all, Missy?
Blue one.
You know where it is, the blue one.
Oh, 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 the blue one, um.
Wait, wait, you don't know where the others are?
Let's just do one question at a time.
One, one question at a time, Mister Ticker, he's one man.
Well, yeah, one, good guy.
We'll start with.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, it's just, you know what, screw it, he said that, and then he just
yes, you are.
Terry like glances back and forth between you and between him, like looks down himself, and then looks there and then looks down himself, and then looks there.
Hands up and is like. I don't think he can action.
There is something deeply wrong with this captain that I might have, and I might have been, and I might have wasted time.
Oh, alright, but, uh, so, um, he's like, yeah, um, the orb is, uh, in that there fog up there.
I believe we heard of it. That does line up with the information we already held, which means this just only, this just only further confirms it.
You know where the others are?
Out of character, the fog was like, no, everyone of mine never came back, yeah.
Uh, no, 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 it was more, they went in and they got lost for hours. And then they eventually came back, they, it was the other party, the one with the dwarf, they were, they were ranting, uh, according to Dig dug, they were ranting angrily about it.
Eighteen versus.
We're not going back on the bridge?
Uh, no, we are not. We don't need all our individual character pieces out anymore.
It doesn't matter if it's faster, we're not going back on the bridge.
Uh, uh, it's not fast, that's the one, yeah, it's fast to go this way, go this way, we have to climb back.
Yeah, I, listen, yeah, this way is faster. I'm not doing that again. But, uh. But, yeah, we're on.
Eighteen and a fourth, it's four miles and change.
Yeah, I feel like Skervo's right arm has to look like a little bit patchwork now, like it doesn't quite match the rest of him.
At least at, at least at the shoulder joint.
Yeah, it doesn't quite match the rest of him.
Yeah, hmm. It's very.
Like, it's still clearly his arm, but it has different parts that make it look a little.
Oh, fine, well, did you wanna make like a persuasion checker or no?
Yeah, yeah, miss, I was thinking.
What you're doing, what she's waiting for?
For more information from our good gentleman.
Well, uh, ah. Uh, no.
I'm going to, I'm gonna, we know that people who go into the fog get lost for very long. Do you have any insight into how this happens?
Well, uh, i- i- if I do say so myself, there are things in that fog that do attack uh, trespassers.
That would certainly get them, that would certainly delay them. Is it smazlike inside or is it just confusingly laid out due to the obvious?
It's awful. Would you, more of the latter.
If I'm gathering this right, you're you're waiting to tell us, to tell us more cuz you, you're waiting for us to prove something, aren't you?
Yeah. It's just like, so like, he's like, wow, not good with bridges, but straight, but straight, but he shot straight as an arrow.
Just calls him like he sees him.
Yeah.
Nah, no, I was gonna try, I was trying a little persuasion, that was hard work. Alright.
Yeah, I I was, I was like, I'm like, single digits aren't gonna help me. And it's like, it's like, so what exactly would we need to prove then?
Well, you'll find it when the time is right.
This is obviously way more important than just some random explorer.
Well, yeah, I'm pretty sure he actually lives in this hut.
Well, yeah, but aside from that.
Yeah. So. Hmm. Oh, God.
Feels like, uh, feels like a good spot to end the session, obviously, since Spencer needs to drive a far distance back, so.
Okay.
But feel like a good spot to end the session.
Really, it, really.
So Spencer doesn't drive back, you know, at one AM or something like that.
Well, no, last time I, let's see, last time I drove back, okay, let's see, I normally stay up till four AM.
Well, yeah, you stay up until four AM, but you don't drive at four AM.
Yeah. You got a point there. Alright, we'll end it early, this time, well.
Very well, then, I didn't die.
Alright, thank you, okay, we don't have any Twitch watchers, but anyone who watches this on YouTube, thanks for watching it, um. Be back, we won't be back next week.
Nope.
Uh, but we 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 might be back the week after that. Um, see you later.